This conference will now be recorded. Town Board of Bad Mountain, Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for June 21st.
Unmuted.
January 28th, Holy Cow, 2020. So, Brian, we...
Yes, I will.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward. Land or County Commissioned Commission may vary for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order may be combined for consideration to the public, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of things to report. On the 6th of January, I had my national meeting with the Justice and Public Safety. And one of the main concerns that they have is FEMA. And the disaster is, and it seems like what's been going on is the counties keep getting pushed back a little bit. They said disasters do not happen on federal land, so the counties need to be involved with the states. And one of our speakers was, actually his name is Judd Freed. He's from the International Association of Emergency Managers, and he is the current chair. And he was talking about the requests that they made into Biden's administration about FEMA and what we could be doing to get to the table. And one of the requests was that they actually meet with our association, that international association on a quarterly basis. So, they're looking at a lot of different things and said, well, this new stimulus package really is just simply a redistribution, it seems like, of all of our money. So, there were some concerns on that. On the 11th of January, I had an Austin Airport Advisory Board meeting. Our chair continues to be the same, Ray Williams, and our vice chair, Tom Anderson. And of course, Tom Cordoza was appointed by our board and actually completes that. We still need an alternate, but at least we're full on that. Talking about a lot of different future projects and such that's coming up, and of course, our budget. And on the 21st of January, I had the Kingston Town Board meeting. Actually, Linda McMahon is our trustee from the South on the Board of Education. And she was telling us that the kindergarten and first grade are going to four days a week. The second grade is following close, like now, or very, very close. And then the fifth grade will be up along right with it. So, of course, Austin's always been four days a week because it's just a very, very small amount of children. But that was good news. On the Kingston side, of course, they're looking at the grants that they'll be before us on our budget. But naturally, no St. Patrick's Party again this year, so they're losing their big fundraiser. They are going to try a raffle again like they did last time, that we get the picnic. But no party in person. Their new chair is June Manhire. She's new on the board. She's been in Kingston for a long time, in chariot, actually, many years ago. Vice Chair is Tammy Elkins. Grace Kemp was elected to the board. She sits on new. Marlene Briscoe sits on new. And then Tammy Newton, who was on previously. And they had on their agenda our senior meals, because I think we explained we had been taking senior meals to them because of COVID and because so many of the seniors were sheltering and it was difficult to get to the stores and such. So, they're kind of concerned about what would happen when we changed that COVID emergency response and trying to make some plans if we can continue senior meals in some way. So, we will have that on an agenda and be looking at that, I think, very shortly. On the 22nd, I had an ACO meeting. We had a couple of people address us, of course, on COVID naturally. Caleb Cage was there and Julia Peck, who is the Deputy Administrator for the Public and Behavioral Health. And she was talking about the new call center that they were doing, which now is live and online. And it's 12 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's an 800 number. Actually, it's 800-401-0946. And it's for folks that are concerned about COVID and don't know where else to go. So, they call there and they will give them the information to the website, which is the state immunization site, which all the different counties are on. And our county is on that, telling them what to do also. But if they, if they're in part of the group that should be tested, should have the COVID vaccine, then they will take all the information. And if they're not part of the group, they will take the registration for them right then over the line. So, it seems to be a good number to refer them to, to start from. So, and like I said, that went live this week. ACO is drafting our federal policy priorities for 2021 for our legislative conference this year, which will be virtual. And the registration is open, but I have asked Burt to look into a group rate for us, which they are offering. So, if you would like to attend virtually, instead of registering separately, please talk to Burt and see if we can get a group amount. Because the group amount was like a thousand and some dollars instead of $2.75 a piece. So, it really does work out better, and that's unlimited. Let's see. The only other thing I have was on the 27th, yesterday, we had an NGM meeting. Some of you were on that with Nevada Gold Mines and talking about community grants. Lori, of course, participated from the Cook House Museum, so I think she's looking for a grant. But we're also looking for anything that can, that we can do under economic development, environmental, COVID, there's all kinds of things that they have money for, for the grants, for up and down Highway 80, so we're looking at that. Thank you.
No formal meetings. Had an informal meeting with Sheldon Mudd, NNRDA. And Sheldon shared some of the challenges that he's had over the past couple of years and where the emphasis within NNRDA is. And based on that meeting, the next day, I gave Sheldon the name of a young man in town that is, he's an entrepreneur. He has a drone business and he has a plastic printing business. He has a plastic printer and he makes accessories that he designs for thermal imaging. And this just fit right into the crap that NNRDA is looking for and that this young man doesn't want to work at the mines anymore. He wants to work for himself. So Sheldon is going to help him get to a place that he wants to be on a one-year program. So, that was really exciting. I've known this kid since he was born and he's really, he's doing well. Then yesterday, we had a meeting, phone meeting with Joey Gilbert. And for those of you that don't know Joey Gilbert, Joey Gilbert is a fighter-turned-attorney and he's taken on the issues in the state pro bono. Joey Gilbert has some very, very convincing numbers from some very, very high-powered individuals in the medical field that have quit positions because they felt they were being told to lie. We'll have that information forthcoming in the future. So, we're on a good path.
All right. I attended my first LEPCE meeting two nights ago. Couple of things that were important were we were needed to get our, all the documents into CERC, the state, that we were in compliance. Now, mind you, I haven't been on, worked with CERC, with LEPCE for a long time, so it's going to be relearning this stuff. But one of the things we did do in there was the Hazbat mitigation plan for the county, which was interesting. That was about a two-hour process of doing that. And it was interesting to, you know, see where we are in case something happens and where, where things can fit in that we can do as a county. So, but we did get that done and we did get the promulgation done and sent into the state. So, that's for LEPCE. And then I had an informal meeting with Ty Gary from the Nevada Mining Association, asking him, I try to, you know, make contact with him every few weeks. And so, this was just a few days ago, and asking where we were. Because I have some local people in town who listen to a radio station I never knew was there that taught, and how this, I'm not quite sure how this works. Some of you might already know, but it's, they're listening to the legislature and the things that are going on in there and the things people are saying. And it's kind of, I didn't know you could do that, but they are elder couple. They listen to everything. And so, they just gave me a rundown of what's being said and who's saying what. And so, when I spoke with Ty, he said that the governor was looking at, informally at this time, looking at not moving this forward, trying to even go anywhere. Because I said, can the governor take that mining bill off? He goes, no, but he can request that it really not be done, anything done with those, with those.
The three resolutions you're talking about?
Yes, those three resolutions. And he can request, say that he really doesn't want anything done with him at this time. And, you know, he said, that's kind of where the governor is right now. He's backtracking a little bit on that. And so, he said, not to guarantee anything, but that's where it's looking right now, that he, you know, not steaming ahead on those. He's kind of stepped back a little bit, so. And what was nice is, he said, if those, if they are able to get those down right now, they don't have, the Nevada Mining Association doesn't have a problem going in themselves and trying to negotiate something that's feasible for everybody. And that's what they want to do, because they want to make sure the counties, you know, all the counties that are involved get what they deserve, as well as the state. And so, they would rather done it on that, that way anyway. But, so, that's kind of where things are now. So, I am in, you know, constant contact with him, so.
That's the joint resolution?
Yeah, and they, I think maybe that they're backing off because they realize that they just can't use a joint resolution to move forward.
But I can't, I'm just going off of what he's saying, so.
I'm pretty sure, listening to what our Brian Hardy has to say.
Go ahead. Anything?
I as well talked with Joey Gilbert and very compelling. And also lots of news releases that you're not necessarily going to hear on Main Street News. The WHO's organization, or World Health Organization has, has made a statement as far as testing. CDC has changed some things. Very interesting, so.
I went to the tourism, or the rodeo board.
Uh-huh, the rodeo board?
Yeah. And they were working on changing the wording on their agreements for people who want to put on a rodeo or whatever. And they all also asked me if I'd ask if the county wanted to put on a rodeo sometime this year.
So, they're throwing that out there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. So, for staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
All righty, good morning. So, I did meet with the NDOT and they will be showing up at our next meeting. They'll have to do it virtually because of their rules. However, in the next couple of weeks, you guys will see a red light show up down there in the four-way across from the aisle there. That will be back to the old school, red light blinking in the middle to hopefully slow some of the truck down coming through there. And then for the I-80 improvements, they started at State Line and they're going to State Line. And every, every town, and it's kind of flip of a coin, is getting improvements, you know, beautification projects. So, hopefully, Bad Mountain will be there by 2023, is what they, is what they said, is the hope for the beautification on the freeway. I asked them about the sound wall over here behind Gold Creek. They said that if the county came forward with any money to assist, it moves the project right up the, right up the chain to the top. It's about $2 million per mile and, and a...
Sound wall? For a sound wall?
Mm-hmm.
$2 million per mile for an eight-foot brick wall?
No, no, I think them are much taller than eight feet. It's like the one that's over there by the school when you're on the freeway. I want to say they must be 12 or 15 feet tall. They're pretty tall.
That's pretty hefty.
But that's, that's the numbers they threw at me, is $2 million per mile. And I Google Earth this, so don't hold these numbers to me. But it's a third mile is all that's needed to cover up the residence backyards on Gold Creek there. Comes out to about...
Some of those residents, because there's some residents that don't want it.
Okay. Well, and everybody will have the, you know what I mean? I know that some have showed up these meetings prior to and asked for it and they had a little community group that were, that were pushing hard for it, not only for sound, but safety and some other reasons. So, we'll give them their opportunity to speak. But it's about $300,000 roughly for us to get that sound wall put in. If that was what would, if the county paid for it all now, who knows what NDOT would leverage for us. And so, another thing I want to touch on today is, I know that all of the commissioners and myself have been getting a fair number of emails about Land or County standing up and doing something with, you know, our governor's overreach and everything. And what I would like to point out is, it's my opinion, as well as our district attorney's opinion, that Land or County not only did something, but we actually led. You know, these, these other counties are doing resolutions. And the term for a resolution is just a formal expression of an opinion or a will of an official municipal body adopted by a vote. So, it truly has no bearing or anything other than we say somebody stating their opinion. And is what Land or County has done, why I say we've led and we've actually stood stronger than any resolution that can go out, is back in August, we adopted the White House recommendations for Land or County. And, and these are just recommendations. People still have their, you know, their civil liberties and respecting their rights and their, and their opinions. And Land or County didn't only do that, but they took, you guys took another step and, and said that if a business were to get cited for something like this, that we would step up and, and take care of that citation for them if they were willing to sign a waiver. So, we have stepped far beyond a resolution and made a very strong stance, not only for our businesses, small businesses, but for our community as a, as a whole. Some of these, some of the things that people are reaching out to us for are their own district or their own board. So, the hospital has their own district. We, we don't, or the school, I mean, has their own district. So, we don't get to say what the school does or doesn't do. So, for them people, I would ask that they, that they reach out to the school board members and start making their presence known there if that's the direction they want to go. But as far as the county, when you look around this room, you can see where most of us stand. And, and the commission has made a very strong stance for us on that, respecting all of our, all of our liberty and, like I say, standing constitutionally correct and holding up to their oaths of office. So, I respect that for Unger and all of our commissioners. It, it means a lot. And I know that these other, some of these other boards, they've done the same thing. And now, it, there's going to come a time when people need to sink or swim, you believe or you don't. So, with that, I, I've attended a few other meetings, but nothing that I can't get on the agenda later or that's not already on the agenda, so.
Burt, on the White House recommendations, we're going with the White House recommendations that were written at the time we adopted them, not new changes.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and in your guys' motion on the White House recommendations, you guys actually did reference a date on that recommendation, so. That's all I have to report.
All right, very good. Thank you. For public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the, at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Land or County Clerk's Office for viewing and copies are available for a nominal charge.
We need to call for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Public comment. Got to hit myself, as usual.
Please, come on.
Muted. Unmuted.
All right. Starting with the consent agenda. One, approval of January 28th, 2021, agenda notice. Two, approval of May 7th, 2020, agenda budget workshop meeting minutes. Three, approval of August 13th, 2020, meeting minutes. Four, approval of August 27th, 2020, meeting minutes. Five, approval of September 10th, 2020, meeting minutes. Six, approval of September 24th, 2020, meeting minutes. Seven, approval of December 17th, 2020, meeting minutes. Eight, approval of January 4th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of the payment of, excuse me, approval of payroll change requests. You have a motion?
Well, I don't think we received all the minutes.
We got one.
I'll make the motion that we approve number one, the agenda notice. Number three, the August 13th, 2020 minutes. Number seven, December 17th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number eight, January 4th, 2021, meeting minutes. And number nine, the approval of payroll change requests. Did not receive the other minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number one, for possible action to approve or disapprove the payments of bills. So, we have two checks that we need, three checks we need to pull out there. It's going to be 210-396, 210-481, 210-549. So, can I get a motion to approve without those three bills?
I'll make the motion that we approve the payment of the bills minus the three checks.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So, now do I have a motion to pay?
I made a motion that we honor the checks that were pulled from the payment.
All right, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain because they're made to my employer.
All right, very good. Moving forward. All right. For action to approve, disapprove, approval, that, boy, today I'm struggling with you guys, I'm sorry. For a possible action to approve, disapprove the proposed employment agreement for County Manager Burt Ramos and authorize the chair to sign.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
I don't have any questions.
Other than the question, yeah, so. Is there, do you have something?
I do have, yeah. I have a concern under the termination with the 4.2. And that's again, if we decide that we want to, to terminate the services of our county manager, it's the same contract that we had before with Keith Westingard, which is one-year salary calculated at the time employment ends. I, I have a real problem with, with that one. I still feel that a county manager is more of an at-will employee. And I understand if we terminate, that there should be a severance pay, absolutely. But for most of them, even CEOs, I mean, they have severance pays of three months, six months. But a year is just really tearing financially. I think we're, it's not the best that we could do. And I would like to see that reduced.
Well, I don't like to hire people that I think that aren't going to work out. So, I'm in favor of the contract.
Well, I'll add to that, Art, is that, I mean, if you look at the average lifespan of a county manager, I think when I looked at it, it was like two to three years, and then you're switching. I don't know who in their right mind would take a job that that's high stress without a contract. I wouldn't. And I think that just goes hand in hand to the quality of county managers that we're going to retain or potentially get in the future when he decides to sit down or whatever. I, I just think it's, I think it's smart.
The thing, the thing for me is that Burt's not going anywhere.
Right, exactly.
Burt lives here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
24/7, 365, so.
Something else that goes along with that is that he has chose to kept his wage at what it was, what it was when he first stepped in, what he was making correct, what you were making. And I think this is, needs to be stated. He came into the position without taking the pay increase up to what the former person was making, which, and then is choosing to still stay at that rate, which I think speaks volumes for that. And so, I, he could be asking for a lot more money and then less and not, and not worry about that part, but still be making this much more money. But he's choosing to stay at his rate, which, like I said, not to be a dead horse, speaks volumes to me. So, that's, you know, I'm okay with that.
And then on clause 4.2, I'd like to point out that it's, we can do it for no cause. And if it's, and if he's performing the job of the duty, he would get it. But if, if I'm not mistaken, if he's violated some of our county policies or has acted inappropriately, I don't think the severance would go with that.
No, that's, that's all part of the contract.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's just cause. But the other thing is, and you're absolutely right, I think we're very fortunate that he stepped forward to, to look at this position. And, and I'm very pleased that he's going to continue. But I also think we have to look at it and be physically minded here. And Burt came in and still is, has a lot to learn. I mean, he wasn't a county manager. He didn't come forward as a county manager. And he's worked hard on education, which will continue, because he does have a lot to learn yet. So, I, I understand what you're saying as far as the salary, but, but you're bringing somebody in and we're training them too. And I think that's important, so.
I see what, I see what you're saying, but honestly, I think that's a bit of a slight on Burt, because what I've seen with Burt, and I've done this four years, I mean, in my second term, I've worked under three different county managers, and Burt is doing the job.
Amen.
I don't think that was the question. I think, I think the question is what kind of a contract that we are going to give them. And I do think we have to be physically responsible.
And I agree, but I think where that can be is where, if we have a problem with an employee that we start dealing with the issues with that employee, with, if they are not, if they are violating their contract, or they're doing whatever, if there's a violation of contract or they're not doing, their, their evaluations are not, were at par, those are where you start going to where you can terminate them with cause. And that's how you just avoid that by, so it's our job, I think, to, if we're going to terminate somebody and not give them that, it's our job to make sure that we put our ducks in a row and that we're violating them for a reason and not just saying, we want you out of here, here's this money. Because then it's a black eye on us and it's not good for the taxpayers. We need to do our job and be able to say, if he's not doing his, then he needs to be held accountable. And that's how you, how that, how that works within that. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying. And it's almost the same thing of saying, some of the legislatures that we're so upset with, and we go, how can they keep putting them back in office? Because it's up to the voters. So, it's up to us. And we're the ones, and, and I thought maybe we might have learned a little bit from the last one that we went through. I thought we had a lot of different reasons of why we felt it was no longer compatible. But the point is, we paid a whole year's salary and a lot of benefits that I didn't think was really proper for, I mean, by contract, we did it. But I'd like to see us avoid that same mistake. Not that it would ever happen with Burt, but that's not the point. That's like getting married and saying, we'll never divorce. I mean, sometimes there comes a point where there is a divorce between two people. And in this case, if there is, I just don't want the county paying that kind of money out again when I don't believe it's necessary. That's all.
Well, I think that Kathy is spot on. If you need to terminate somebody, it starts during the evaluation. That's when it starts. It doesn't start running into somebody's office and being upset with them. You have a procedure to follow. I've known Burt for a long time. And I'm pretty darn impressed with how quickly he can learn. That's one thing that hasn't been mentioned. Burt learned volumes in a short period of time. And he's made really good decisions. Bert learned volumes in a short period of time, and he's made really good decisions. And he deserves this contract that's been written. Ted, did you review the contract?
Yeah, the contract came out of my office, Art.
Okay, you see any flaws in it?
No, I don't.
Okay, I didn't think so, I didn't either.
I just think that if we, and it's very hard during evaluation, because I was just, I think, one evaluation with the last. And it's very hard for people to, um, evaluate people poorly. It's hard for, you know, to get consi- consistency across the board, because everybody has their own personal views. But I honestly think as a board, it's our job, if they're, if our county manager's not doing that, we swallow it and just say, you're not doing your job, or you are doing an excellent job. And I have to say, there was a lot of elderly people in town, and I told him this, that were angry about him, because he's too young, he's this, he's that, he's this, and I just said, give him a chance. And now they have nothing but, you know, they think the sun rises and sets on him. For one, if he, and he'll admit, I'm not always right, but I'll find the answer. Or he's respectful and he gets back to people. Or if you want to call him on something, you call him on something, so he knows that he's doing something wrong. And so I think it, by all means, that, that, and I totally respect what you're saying, Patsy, I do. But I think it's our job as a board to correct that, if that issue comes up and go, and hey, you, we are holding you accountable, because we are not paying out another person. And if we do pay him out, that's our fault and shame on us.
One more thing to say, so let's just jump in the shoes of Patsy and let's say, okay, we don't approve that clause. I know what I would do. I'd step down, I wouldn't take the job. Then where are we at? We're at advertising it, we don't know who we're going to get. That's irresponsible. That's what I think. Looking at some of the past county managers that we've had, we've got a born and raised interest in our community county manager. And that is worth something. And if that's the contract that we need to negotiate to keep him, you're not going to talk me out of it, so.
Thank you, Brian, I think that sums it up pretty darn good. I make a motion that we, uh.
Yeah, I ma- I made the motion to approve.
Okay.
Oh, I'll second it.
All right.
The only, the only thing that I would ask is, now would be the time to give Bert a raise, if we so choose to. It's not written in the, uh, the item here in the agenda. Can we do that, Ted, if we so choose?
No, you can only, uh, you can only approve or disapprove the proposed employment agreement.
Okay, so if we wanted to give him a raise, it would be in the future?
Right, you could probably follow the, you should probably follow the procedure.
Right, okay.
Well, I'm sure we'll be doing an evaluation before very long too, so.
And that's what he's wanting too, so we don't want to make him uncomfortable. Because I know saying too much money makes him uncomfortable, so I think we want to do what he wants. And I'm, you know, I, we go by what we have, and so Brian made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys, I do, I appreciate it. And, uh, I didn't take this job because I necessarily wanted the job. My dream isn't to become a, a county manager. It suits what, what I'm doing right now really well. I get to go home and then be with my family every evening. I love this community, both Austin and here. And that's, I'm not asking for more money, because I am new, I am learning. But when you look around at other people that are, that are doing this, they're, they're doing quite well. I, and I'm not here to, you know, compare. But, um, I thought that it was fair to stay at the same wage I was at. The reason I took the job is because the guys that I worked with when I was in Public Works are a ton of great people. And I've seen what different management at the top can do to your organization. And, uh, and a book that I read, and a few of you've read, you know, it says if you, if you don't step up and take them positions, that you're to be governed by lesser men. And, uh, so that's why I took the position. I'm not going to enjoy sitting in that office, looking out on a sunshiny day, thinking that I could be out there with one of the guys, jumping in the hole, acting like men, saying, saying ridiculous things over and over, um, fixing a, fixing a water leak. Because that's, that's really the kind of, that's what I enjoy. Um, and there'll be days that I do still bail out of the office.
So, yes.
And, and go help the guys, because I enjoy having that connection with all the guys. But I just wanted the public and you guys to know why I took the job. The contract is solely for, for the protection of me. I've been through a little bit with our previous board, um, that I feel it necessary to have a contract. And, and so I just wanted everybody to know why that's there, why I'm staying at the wage I'm at, I'm not here, you know. I'm, I'm comfortable, so I'm happy to be here, thank you, guys. Bert, thank you, thank you for your transparency, and I do appreciate you.
Oh, yeah.
This is a long way from room one twenty-five, Bert. You did not apply yourself in high school, young man.
Very good, very proud of you, thank you. All right, moving forward. So, for possible action to approve, disapprove, the proposed employment agreement for Public Works Director Don Prince, and, um, authorize the chair to sign.
There's no questions on that, I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
And I'll second it. Come on, sit down.
Sit down there, Don.
And again, you don't want to look at that last clause that we discussed in the last.
It's the same, I, I still feel the same, that it's our responsibility to hold them accountable. And I, and I tru- I truly do respect where you're coming from and understand that. But it's, just like he said, we have to step up and do what's right. And that is, if he's not doing his job, you, you evaluate him, he learns it, or he leaves. And that's just.
I'll make the same point. Prior commission, I went through three public works directors. And I think the point still applies, that whatever we did in the past didn't work. We have a contract. It holds them accountable, we have an out, if they're not doing their job. I think it encourages better people to apply for the position. Again, who in their right mind, I wouldn't, would you, Art?
Most, but most of them are at-will employees, that's the point of what you have. Um, the, the, I mean, you go through probation and you have, you know, evaluations and such, but a year's salary because they're unhappy with you just seems like we're not really accounting for the public's money as well as we should be, that's all.
We are, if we're evaluating for them correctly.
Yeah, exactly, maybe they're holding us accountable to do, to be a correct board.
Exactly, you have, we have procedures, and you have to follow the procedures. You step outside the procedures, you, you're out of your safe harbor. You've got to do it correctly. Evaluation is where you mention what goals, what objectives you want. And if the person doesn't complete those goals and doesn't have a good reason, that's when you start to move.
And if we do what we did last time, then shame on us.
Yes, exactly.
Amen.
It boils down to us giving fair and correct evaluations at the point of time and not letting things.
And I'll say this about the last term, I was the only one that spoke up against the county manager, uh, during an evaluation. I didn't like what he did that year, and I told him. Well, that changed.
This, this isn't the place to discuss that.
So we have, uh, um, Brian made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to go.
We'll hear from you later.
All right. District Attorney for Discussion and Possible Action to Appoint the Lander County Commissioner to a newly, um, created Nevada Local Justice Rein- Reinvestment Coordinating Council, NLJRCC. So.
Ted, can you add any to this, other than what we've read?
Well, basically, if, if you read the background on this, or the backup on this, it would say that, that, uh, there is a commission out there. And the commission wants to enact a coordinating council that advises the commission. So, that's why they have this. So, they want a person from our county, or, or county commissioners. My understanding that Art is interested in this job, uh, and probably be a good, it, it's up to you guys though. But that, that's basically, uh, all I know, that, that they, they are to advise the commission.
I, I really have interest in this board, and I would appreciate being nominated and, uh, placed on this board. I think that, uh, my experience working with juveniles and my life experience, I could bring a really unique perspective to, uh, to this board.
I would like to put, um, on the record, because of the, our, um, as, uh, we've just been told by the DA, that, um, this is a brand-new board that was started from the last legislature. And every commission is to appoint someone. All the rural areas have one person, Washoe County and Clark County get two people. So, that will make up the whole board. One of the things they did request, uh, it said that the, the commission will be comprised of, and should be comprised of stakeholders from the criminal justice system and mental health and treatment communities. Not necessarily a commissioner, but since we have the, the background and the interest of, uh, Commissioner Clark, I think that, uh, that outweighs it a little bit. And I think he'll be very, very interesting, because I don't think that's what the commission will be made up of. And I think that, um,
Absolutely.
That Lander County needs their, their input with Commissioner Clark.
Being a special.
Commissioners, commissioners, excuse me, uh, for the record, I did call, I did call the, uh, the writer of that letter that's in the backup and, uh, asked her if it was necess- what was necessary. And then he said, the main priority would be someone who's interested in sitting on the board.
Well, I, I think that my, my background in special education, and like I said, dealing with juveniles, do, dealing with, just about every kind of kid comes through, uh, public schools, that as far as the mental health issue, I think I've got plenty of experience in dealing with the juveniles on that.
I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Commissioner Clark to the board.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, very much.
There you go. Moving forward, Ottermont General Hospital, for possible action to approve, disapprove, or amend the proposed ordinance two zero two one dash zero one, amending Lander County Code Title Two, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero one zero, to change the hospital district board membership from a seven members to five members, after being read by title to the board.
Eight, oh, sorry, go ahead.
If approved, the procedure contained in NRS two four four point one zero zero one must be followed.
I do have a question, um, and I see our, we've got some representatives from the hospital board and the hospital, thank you. Um, my only question is, right now, are D and E vacant?
Yes, for our first two.
For the record, oh, sorry. For the record, Jason Blake speaking, yes, those two are vacant. No one, um, put their names in to be put on the ballot in this last election.
Yeah, exactly.
So this means this would be effective like now? Does it have a set time that it's effective?
It ha- Ted, doesn't, if, if we approve this, then it goes in, it goes, uh, it goes on the ballot, and then, uh, Lander County has to vote on the issue, correct?
No.
Yes.
It, this could be, it's not a constitutional issue. This is, just, this changes the ordinance to show that there is a five-member board, one of which is a county commissioner.
Because it's understate that under the ordinance?
So if we, so if we decide to go from a seven to a five-man board, it's effective immediately? Or then, or do they finish serving out their term?
No, they finished serving out their term, but they're, the way we did it up, Commissioner, is that there, all the spots that will be on the new one are filled. So we don't need, we're just getting rid of two board members that aren't filled presently.
Are you sure you can do it with just five?
Oh, yeah. Been doing it for how long?
Three is not a good number.
Five is a good number.
Five's a good number, at least five.
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, seven, seven-man board's hard to fill in a small community, so.
Especially if we don't, if we have two vacancies there. I mean, people aren't willing to volunteer for these tough positions. Four-hour meetings, six-hour meetings, eight-hour meetings. Once or twice a, a month.
Once a.
Once, once a month.
Once a month.
I'm Doug Mills, for the record, I'm on the hospital board. And, and also, um, this last election, we, we had two seats go unfilled. Nobody in the community ran for those positions. And in the previous election also, we had two seats go unfilled. So it is, it is difficult to fill those seven seats.
So then, is this what's being read in? Is this what we have, how does it work? How do we go from here, Ted?
You read the title in.
You don't have to read the whole.
And then you approve it, or disapprove it, or amend it.
So I just go, we just start from summary all the way through the entire thing with the corrections?
No, just by title.
Just by title, oh, so is that something that I can do, and then they can make the motion? Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right.
So then, Ted, do we have to have a hearing to change this ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay, so today is just the beginning?
Yeah, so this is just the beginning.
And that's what, that's why I put in the NRS two four four point one zero zero, subjecting one. The exact code what we have to do. We have to publish it, have a public hearing, uh, and at the public hearing, uh, that's when the final, uh, vote is taken.
Okay.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion?
Yeah, we have to read that in.
Yeah, I'll make it in, in my motion. I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve an ordinance amending Lander County Code Title Two, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero one zero, to change the hospital district board from seven members to five members, and other matters properly relating thereto.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
All right, Brian made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, that's, no, I get, I get. All right. For po- okay, moving forward, for possible action to approve, disapprove, um, aviation support and maintenance service agreement for the Battle Mountain and Austin Airport.
So this is just re-upping a, a service agreement that we've had in the past?
My understanding is there really isn't anyone else around that does like our AWO systems and such, and we don't really have a choice, so we don't go out for bid or anything naturally. We just have to keep renewing, but we can't even advertise or look for somebody else. I understand this is just a very specialized service, right?
Yeah, it's professional service, so it's not necessary to bid it. Um, there is another provider that is out of Salt Lake, but they're considerably higher.
I'll make a motion that we approve the aviation support and maintenance services agreement for the Battle Mountain and Austin Airport with DBT Transportation Services.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
So Patsy made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, moving forward. All right. For discussion and possible action to create a purchasing policy for Lander County, wherein local and American-made goods are given priority.
Do we not have a BLM representative here?
It's on the next one.
Oh, sorry.
So what, do we have any, just that as a statement, no backup or anything to work that way?
No, if you guys would like to make that policy, then you guys just give us that direction, and we'll bring a policy back before you for approval.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we approve this item.
I'll second.
All right, Art made the motion, and Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Just a, just a comment on it, because I, I think it's something that we all agree with. And I think even the federal government has gone, American-made on Mondays, or some silly thing like that. But I think it's very difficult to do, and, um, I know you're going to have to do some research on this for us to bring forth a protocol of some type. Um, because a lot of the things that, that we do, um, that we purchase, uh, they, the company we purchase from doesn't have any control. You know, they don't always know, so, um, it's just the idea, if it's our attitude, and that we'll try where we can, especially on the larger items.
Yeah, I want it written to where it's, every effort's made, because I don't want that to be an excuse.
Yes, so, it's how I've always done it in the past, and it's how Donnie does it currently, is we, if we get, we don't ever price-shop somebody local. However, we will get a price from out of town, and come to someone local and say, "Hey, can you match this?" So, we can try to keep as much business within Lander County as possible. I do also know, and I don't have the exact number, but there's a certain number, and I want to say that it's 250,000, or maybe it's even a million, I'm not exactly sure what the number is, but once a job is bid out, and it is governmental, that it has to be American-made product. You have to have American-made steel, you have to have American-made. So, there are some things that, that are American-made already by statute, the way that it works now. So, to do local business, we'll try to clean it up to make it as much as possible, comes right back here to Lander County, we like our tax dollars spent here.
That was, that was the rule in the last administration. That rule may change on construction and using foreign steel. So, if we make a statement now, and we're making a statement based upon the Trump administration's approach to construction, and that's, that's where I want to stay.
And my whole point for bringing that, this up in the first place, was just to try to curb the Amazon, the Walmarts, it's just, that's what I'm not okay with. We need to try to buy local, and then if, even if we can't, I think we still need to encourage that we buy from, if it's out of town, mom-and-pop businesses.
I, I, I agree with that.
So, so just so the commission knows, because I've looked at that as well, a lot of the Amazon, a lot of, as office products, we don't have necessarily, but we will start looking at, like you said, a mom-and-pop's office store, look around and, and make sure that, that the taxpayer's getting a fair deal as well. You know, we want to make sure that we aren't paying over and above, just to support the mom-and-pop.
Thanks, Bill.
I think we know we're going to pay more if it's made in America. I know my jeans are like eight dollars more if they're made in America. I'm more than willing to pay that eight bucks.
All right. So, all right, moving forward. Discussion of possible action by Lander County to pursue all options available in cooperation with the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, to open North Fork Road. Representative with the, Pearl Land Manager has been invited to participate in this discussion.
Yes, so they have asked that we table this while they do some more research. I did talk to John Sherby, and he's happy to show up here and present for this. When we did speak the first time, he was preparing himself to speak for the golf course. So, my mistake for not clarifying that with him, and, and they didn't look at the agenda until yesterday when we had spoke again, and he said that they would like to do some more research. However, they do believe that that gate may be as far as 300 feet onto BLM property, and they're going to do some more research on the 2477, and that Senate Bill 316, which is blocking public access. We'll all become more educated on that. I do know that the Ruby Mountains, all the ranchers there have blocked that off, like I was telling Art yesterday, because there is an alternate access for the public. And so, they can't apply for the, that Senate Bill 316, which, which allows free access to the public, to public land. And the 2477 doesn't work, because they don't have any existing roads that were there before. I believe it's 77. And I don't know that that necessarily takes any rights away from a private property owner. So, BLM has a whole bunch of research to do, and they'll bring all that before us at the next meeting on the 11th.
Yeah. No, this, it's not working. Kyla, didn't you find that, that that fence was on BLM? Because we thought that it was on private, and you found the map.
Um, when I look on pictometry, as far as I can zoom in on, it, it does start on BLM land, and it looks as if, but I mean, until you really, truly...
Yeah, I remember looking at the map, I think with you and Adam, the, the, the gate is coincident ways from where the property line begins.
From pictometry, it does look that way.
No, mine's on time, so I think we're going to take a break. I want to, because we got a mess, and I want to make sure everything, so we're going to take a few minutes, a 10-minute break, so we can see if we can get these working.
Four, three, two, one, five, four.
Okay. Are you guys still on?
I have to plug the thing, so I don't know how to plug it.
And that's the one, that's the only one they're making a new plug in.
But you should just have to turn it on and see if it's there. Because are we going to plug it from the wall?
No, I don't personally write letters in county buildings. Yeah, so if you, do you have access to the county, to the, to the company Amelia? I put it under, or just do a search, if you don't like a clerical search, and just type in JDT, and you'll see that, it should pull up all his emails, and you should actually see the, the lady's quite cheap, and send us.
I don't know.
Can't follow that wire, it's your work load in.
That one's working. On all the time, excuse my reach. Here's it.
Where's our IT?
You want to call up to IT? And have them come down, him and come down and fix it? Does Richard know how to fix it?
That's what I'm saying, just on your...
Does Richard know how to fix?
He's...
Kathy, will you please tap Brian's? No, no. Brian's, Brian's?
Brian's is on now. Here's his stuff.
Do you clap over his?
Over his?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't.
You're all right, no worries, I want him to work, so.
No, no. Yeah, I'm getting him in the box on the shelf.
Do you want to just turn them all on for me? To Brian's, JR and Brian's?
No, just turn it on.
Well, I don't make the packet.
No, I don't get packets.
And then Liz, will you be willing to turn that one?
Yeah, the first, the third, press them on, which is great. Yeah, don't say anything, it's on.
Would you like that to bet on there? Kapin.
Don't put them in there.
Do you want to sleep in your cabinet on this?
Of course they do. You have to do it.
Will you clap on your phone here?
Kathy, do you get, do you get minutes? Do you get, how many minutes turn it out from the cook's office when you get the minutes? I get the same as everybody else, so we're out.
So, you get them in your book and then print them out and put it in your mouth?
Um, I got them in my box there.
There we go.
Uh-huh. So, we don't need them in the books? Yeah, we don't need them in the books.
Yeah, you can go ahead and pick them off, Brian, go ahead and pick it off.
Because we, we get them as limited.
...will now be recorded unmuted.
Ted, are you there, Austin? Nine. Yeah, Austin's on. Austin, you're on, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, for number nine, for possible action to approve, disapprove the purchase of a synthetic ice rink from Quick Rink to include the following i, uh, two options. Goodness gracious, you guys, I'm sorry for my stuttering around. Option one includes 60 by 100 ice rink, 63,920 for the ice rink V Pro, one-half inch, 6,100 decorative fencing, 7,680 high-quality rental skates, 3,650 skate sharpener auto, automatic, 3,195 skate rink, 6,000 estimated freight, 90,465 delivered. Recommended by REC Center Supervisor, Public Works Director, and supported by County Manager. Option two includes 40 by, 48 by 96 ice rink, 49,750 Quick Rink V one-half thick ice, 5,800 decorative fencing, 7,680 high-quality rental skates, 3, 3,650 skate sharpener automatic, $6,000 freight estimated, 72,800 delivered. Sizes will determine based on the location and placement of the ice rink, to see at backup for example pictures, so, all right, yay.
Commissioners, I was, Sean Baker for the record, I was asked to look into this. Here's the options, it's totally obviously up to you guys and what you guys want to do. So, with that, I'm going to leave the discussion up to you guys, and we'll go from there.
I've, I've got a question. I don't see anything in here, a cost for setup. Who sets it up?
The county will.
The county will set it up?
Yes.
And this is removable, will store it? Okay.
Yes, it's all removable, it's all storable, it's, and another thing is they come in different, they come in squares, so you can set it up in different shapes or sizes also, so, depending on where you guys want to put it, also.
Okay, nighttime use?
It's up to you guys.
With lights?
With lights, and we're going to need supervision too, right?
Yes.
Which is everything we have to put in place that goes with it.
Yeah, no, any, this is for Lander County, it's in Lander County, it's Lander County money, I, I...
It gives the kids...
This will be supervised by the REC Center and the people of the REC Center, so that's, that, of course, we'll have to have supervision from the REC Center. But still, it's also up to you guys where you guys want to go with this.
Also, cameras?
Yep, so we, with the camera system that you guys already approved previously, we'll be in that same area. So, there's two areas really, there's one next to the ball fields, next to the park, so, the ball field's here, the little league field's here, the park's here, that area right there, you put it in, or you can put it in back by the senior league and little league fields behind the REC Center. But there's cameras going in on both areas, so...
If you have a blind spot, just come to us, and let's get more cameras.
That, and we can do that during design as they install it, because we also have Fred Wagner's doing the conduit for the cameras, so...
And then what about maintenance costs on these? Have they been looked into?
So, maintenance is pretty, pretty low on it. To clean it, you just have to pressure wash it and sweep it. You want to sweep it and mop it daily, but it's very, do you guys have the, I had given the packet to go in your folders?
I see.
Yeah, there's some pages in here that...
I don't know if I got that document in my packet.
This is the same, guys, this is the same rink, and the same company from Meridian, right?
Yes.
So, yes, this, when I was up there, Christmas, I saw this, which was absolutely amazing, and, and I couldn't, I can't, I couldn't believe how actually easy it is to take up and take down, and you're not messing with water, and you're not messing with any of that stuff. And then there's other ideas to be discussed in a different time, in the summertime, if we want to use that area for something else, to go in there also for the kids to do. And we are so desperate for things for children to do outside.
What do, what do we do, what do we do as a county, like, do we have, like, do they sign liability forms and stuff?
Yeah, so they already sign liability forms at the REC Center. This will be, I'll have to go to the DA's office again to probably create a different liability form for this, or add it with ours, but yes, they already do sign liability forms.
I know, we actually...
Hockey equipment?
Hockey equipment.
That's something the REC Center can take care of on its own if this is approved.
No, this was, yeah, this was on last year's budget, when we looked at it, we said, we thought we'd wait a little bit. But my understanding is that there's some projects that haven't been done, so apparently you have the money to do this now with this budget, so we don't have to...
Yes, so my other projects on this agenda item, which you guys budgeted for during last budget, come in quite substantially under, so the money is in my budget.
So, we're okay on that?
Yes.
Is there any plans for perhaps putting one, something like that, in the southern area?
We can. I will look into that, Patsy, and I'll bring that back for you guys, but yes, that shouldn't be a problem.
But I think anyway, so, and it's very quick, the timeframe turnaround from the time they, we pay for it to them getting here, getting set up is helpful, like...
I believe it's a month?
Yeah. A month, so...
About six weeks.
How long?
One month. So, we get, as soon as we get it done, we can have it all set up in one month, so they can still, we have the bigger part of this winter to use it.
How, how long can we use it? Does there's a certain temperature outside that we can...
You can use it year-round.
Year-round?
Yes, you can, yeah. And in the summertime, if you want to throw a tarp over it and lay a base on top for roller skating or whatnot, you, he said you're more than, that is a very good option also.
So, what kind of top, just like a tarp that they lay over to roller skate on it?
Well, you wouldn't roller skate on the tarp, but you would lay a tarp over the synthetic ice, and then put another base on top of that, which we did look into that too, and we can only find portable roller skating rinks for rent, but...
We are still looking into roller skating to go over top of this too, so you can have dual options.
Because there'd be a lot of kids that probably want to do that, too. The double B used to be a roller skating rink.
Yeah, many years ago. That was before my time.
Well, that, that, I think this is a great idea. I'll make a motion that we approve option one, the ice skating rink.
I'll second.
All right, so, Art made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, yay. Thank you guys very much for all your hard work in researching all this. All right, moving forward. Discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove proclamation 2021-01, declaring the month of January 2021 as the Lander County National Radon Action Month. All right.
I usually cooperative extension handles this for us, but since we haven't had any, any extension educator for some time, we ask that a dip is put on, because it is a very important proclamation, and so I will go ahead and start on that, if you'd like me to.
All right, yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve proclamation number 2021-01, National Radon Action Month, January 2021. Whereas many Lander County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is primarily cause of lung cancer among non-smokers, and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates that 21,000 people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure in lung and bronchus, cancer kills more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined, and whereas any home in Lander County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four peculiarities per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas the University of Nevada Reno's Extension Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Lander County residents to test their homes for radon, excuse me, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Therefore, the Lander County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2021 as the National Radon Action Month in Lander County, passed and approved and adopted this 28th day of January 2021.
Do we have a problem with radon in Lander County that we know of?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a problem with radon in our county that we know of?
Oh, absolutely.
We do?
Yeah, we've, we've been doing testing for some time, for many years.
What kind of a percentage?
Yeah, it's, it's very strong. There is actually, there could be on the radon, if there's a radon website, because I saw maps at one time a couple of years ago, for some of the levels to look for... as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas the University of Nevada Reno's Extension Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Lander County residents to test their homes for radon, excuse me, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon reducing materials and features. Therefore, the Lander County Commissioners to hereby proclaim January two thousand twenty-one as the National Radon Action Month in Lander County, passed and approved and adopted this twentieth day of January two thousand twenty-one.
Do we have a problem with radon in Lander County that we know of?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a problem with radon in our county that we know of?
Oh, absolutely.
We do?
Yeah, we've, we've been doing testing for some time, for many years, um.
What kind of a percentage?
Um, yeah, it's, it's very strong, there is actually, there could be on the radon, if there's a radon website, because I saw maps at one time, a couple of years ago, for some of the levels to look for especially.
So if they test in a home and they have it, how do they mitigate it?
Um, I, I don't remember how they did that, to be real truthful, but there, there is a, there is a radon program manager, um, with Cooperative Extension, and, um, I'm sure she can give us the additional information. But I will give you the number on that, um, it's eight 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 seven two three six six one zero.
What was that for?
Yeah, and what they will do, they will send out a radon kit to you free if you tell them you're from Lander County. Um, we also looked in, Bert, did we look in to see if there's anybody where they could pick up some, where they could drop some off?
No, I didn't look into that yet, um, I did get the, the email that they had asked if, if they could either, if somebody calls that number, you can request it and they will ship it to you for free, or they asked if Lander County had an employee or somebody that they could send a bunch of kits to, but we would have to do the documentation and make sure that everything is done, so I never did follow up on that.
So at this point, it's just call the, the radon number, and there is a program manager that we can ask, but I, I don't know. I know I was involved in one of them, but I just connected them with the right people, I don't know what they did to mitigate.
Can we get the last four numbers of the, the public number, please?
Yes, it's eight 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 radon ten. How's that, R A D O N, ten?
Alright.
Yeah, seven two three six six one oh.
When Shannon was the secretary for Cooperative Extension, we had kits delivered, and we also had some nice coffee mugs delivered too, so. They could tell you how hot your coffee was by the color on it, I thought that was cool.
Kathy, I can answer Brian's question.
Okay.
Uh, we did the radon test like, uh, ours talking about in the sheriff's office and in Austin, and we had a high radon, uh, number in the Austin substation.
Wow.
And we got it cleaned up by, uh, Norm Denny, he has a radon cleanup outfit out of Gardenville, Nevada. So, and it was really high down there in the.
How did they clean it up, I mean?
I wasn't there when he did it, but Norm Denny.
So is it the building material that emits the radon, or is it?
Comes up from.
Comes up from the dirt.
Comes out of the ground and, and in that building, of course, you got a full basement in there to a point, and, and that's where it was the highest, was in the basement, so, since it was a county building, we had it cleaned up, and that's who did it, if that.
You would think that, like, when you sold real estate, that, that would be a test that would have to be performed before you sold a, a house? I mean, if it's such a, an issue, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, it's like.
It should be, it's just like water, sometimes they don't tell you about water.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so do I have a second?
One second.
Motion was made by Patsy, seconded by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Alright, moving forward. For possible action to approve, disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Battle Mountain Livestock Event Advisory Board, which currently has three vacancies, and new terms are from July first, twenty twenty, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty-two, and to consider all the following applicants, to include Monty Price.
I make a motion, we accept Monty Price, uh, to serve on the board.
Second.
Alright, Brian made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to Mr. Price for stepping up again.
Thank you, Monty.
Yes, alright. Moving forward, for possible action to approve, disapprove, zone change application for Thomas R. McHugh, trustee of the John W. and Renee M. McHugh Trust, changing zero zero two dash three two zero dash one four from Porus Commercial TC to General Commercial District C two, to allow for the future use of gas station. This item was approved by the Planning Commission on December twenty-eighth with no conditions. Alright, so, looking at the map, where's that, if I'm looking at it correctly, is that like on the side behind the sheriff's office?
That's right, just adjacent to it right here.
Just right next to it.
Okay, I was just making sure that, and then why, has it been any public outcry or anything over this, you know, issues?
I have not received any phone calls or emails in opposition or favor.
Now, is this the same people who were going to do it on the other side?
No.
Now, is there, are they a mainstream, like, um?
Who's the franchise, I think is who we're asking.
Tom is on the phone, if, if he would unmute himself, we cannot unmute him if he would like to speak on behalf of them.
So the franchise is what I was looking at.
Okay, I, I have a few questions, and so perhaps you can address it or he can address it. Um, because the franchise is one of them, because I'm assuming we don't have somebody coming in that's unbranded. Um, but I do wonder, um, did we do any kind of a traffic study, or are we requesting a traffic study?
Um, I requested them and.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I, I forwarded this to Endot, and then also just requested moving forward that.
Well, it isn't necessarily Endot, we did a development in Lander County, um, a while ago, and we requested, we, the commissioners, a traffic study to see what we were getting into in that development. Now, I do believe that it's going to be a lot more busy when it goes in, but I still think a traffic study is warranted and important. I also noticed on here there was landscaping, but it's not a condition, and if we don't put it as a condition, I mean, we have, we have our landscaping ordinance, right, of what, what needs to be included, and if we don't put that in as a condition, um, and the other concern I have is, is most certainly the traffic, I mean, it's, it's bad enough, and we're gonna have to look at a traffic light, and I know Endot has looked at it, but they don't even approach those kinds of things, they don't even want them. But if we think it conditional, that we definitely want a traffic light, and I can't imagine, can you imagine anything up there without one?
It just seems odd, especially it's, it's a, it's a, like a thoroughway for like children, you know, going to school and.
Putting a traffic light in this area of Broad Street three oh five, that would be a disaster.
I, are we talking about the right? Are we talking about the right piece of property, I believe that it is on the overpass on this side of town. Where's, where is that?
That's right.
It's, it's in the same exact location as the previous one.
Nope, just right across the street.
Across the street, diagonal.
It's on our side of the street.
Right across from the Garza.
Okay, I apologize, you guys, I, I was under the understanding that it was on this, that it was on the other exit, so my, my apologies.
Nine, nine, nine point some acres, right on the other side of the sheriff's office.
If we put a, a stoplight at Broyles Ranch, or we put a stoplight over here, we will have traffic backed up over the overpass, back down Broad Street, past Maverick, when it's school day. We, we would have a total mess, it's not perfect what we have, but it's better than creating a bigger problem.
I can't imagine the traffic coming in without something to control it, I just can't.
Roundabout?
We can't do a roundabout, that's too close.
Put a light there?
Yeah, they won't put, uh, because they wouldn't put a light when we discussed and begged at Broyles Ranch, um, with, with what we got going on there, that, that wasn't even an option, so I don't know.
I'll tell you what was the best at the bottom of the overpass south, was when Toby Melver went out there and directed traffic and made sure those kids were safe walking to school. That was the best thing to do, was crossing guard.
So can we have a traffic study done before we go any further, can we request that?
You guys can request, uh, public meetings, you guys can request whatever you'd like, some, you know, some citizen input.
I think on behalf of the county and the, the taxpayers, that we should request a ta, uh, a traffic split out of, before we go any further.
And then just put the line across the road with a box and count the cars, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Because.
The other thing, the other thing I have a question about is future use as a gas station. A gas station is one thing, a truck stop is something else. So I don't want to see something morph from what's written into something that's not written.
I believe that they are, they are on here on one of the lines, if you'd like to ask them their future.
He has himself muted. He is on, but he has himself muted, he has to unmute himself, I sent a, a request for him to unmute, but he has not.
Okay.
So, what's his name?
Tom.
Tom, are you there?
Uh, yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Have you heard our discussion?
Yep, I have.
Okay. So yes, our biggest, um, this is Commissioner Ancho, our biggest concern is the traffic, um, because we have a big, we have a huge issue just right on the other side of the overpass, and, um, going to the school is just to the left, you want to go to the right, and, um, we didn't realize it was going to be such a problem until the problem arose, and then at that point, uh, DOT said it was our problem, and so we're just not, we don't want to jump all in and then find out that we have a huge traffic issue there. So we would like, we're looking at having a traffic study done to find out exactly what the impact is going to be.
And the name of your franchise.
Oh, yes, and then can we have the name of your franchise, please?
The name of the franchise, I'm not sure if I understand that question.
Um, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so Tom is the owner of the land, um, I believe Tony's on the line, he's the architect for the, for the project, and for the people that are actually going to be putting the franchise, so, um, I believe that they may be able to answer the questions a little.
Alright.
Kyle, do you know how many pumps they're gonna have, and if they'll have a convenience store?
Um, there was talk of a C store, but like I said, there, Tom, uh, not Tom, Tony.
Tony, so is, is, is Tony on there? Tony, are you there?
Well, I, I would make a motion that we approve this pending the outcome of the traffic study. I would definitely want a traffic study because that's a congested area there, especially in the morning and the afternoon.
I, I think, um, yeah, I think we need plans for landscaping too, um.
And how, that was how Maverick, Maverick went in as a gas station, but it just kind of turned into like a truck stop.
Mega, it wasn't supposed to be.
I think I would like to see this before we make a motion.
Yeah, I think that I would ask.
Um, excuse me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Tony?
No, this is Tom, I'm the owner.
Alright.
I'm representing the, the, the family members as the owner of the property. And. I, um, you see, okay, so let's just make sure that everybody was on board with the exact location of the property. I'm, I'm looking at a flat graph that shows it was on the, um, the corner lot on the south side of State Route three oh five, on the corner of Highway eight and eight, and, uh, three oh five.
I can't hear him, is that correct?
Yes, yes, he's just very fine where it's at, so yes, yes.
Okay, so we know that it's, it's that corner lot.
Yes, and the corner lot, that road right there, so you understand, that road right there is not the issue, it's three oh five is the issue, because we have, you know, schools, we have all, mining, everything is going up and down that road, and, um, on the, just on the other side of the overpass, it gets tr, uh, jammed there because of the Maverick, and it goes, ends up going up over the overpass down the other side, so.
Right, I, I'm, I'm familiar with all of that, I was just there, in, 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 in December, and, um, um, you know, I'm familiar with how my, my grandfather owned this property, and I was come down to my generation and. So I'm, I'm very familiar with where the, you know, the area is, and, and certainly your concern. The chase to me, you, you would want to hear, uh, more from the buyer about, uh, about their, uh, plans to develop property, uh, and, and, and then continue to go from there.
You're correct.
How many pumps do you plan on installing?
It's not him.
It's not him, he's a seller.
Yeah, I don't know, the buyer on the line.
So yeah, I think for one, we need the buyer, so the, all the questions that we have.
For the buyer?
For the buyer.
The developer?
Yeah, the developer.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's, it's alright, um, because he can only answer so many questions, so we'd absolutely need the, the developer here, so we can get these questions, so do we want to just put this on the next agenda and have him here?
Well, we have to do something similar to that if we don't. Kyle, do you know if there's a difference in the definition of a truck stop or a gas station? Like motel and hotel, are there some defining characteristics?
No, it's just that basically it's the, the automobiles, uh, served.
So many of the gas stations trucks still pulled into, for example, Austin, it's a gas.
That's a gas station.
It's a gas station, it's not a truck stop.
Right.
Right.
But basically, they tell me Maverick up here is not a truck stop either.
Yeah.
Where Pilot is a truck stop, that's where they have showers and relaxation, okay? So it's a gas station.
But in our, in our codes, as far as what we have.
But I do think we need to have both of those things, and I don't know whether you want to be in contact with them, um, if they, if they're okay with doing the traffic study as such for us, it's gonna take longer than the eleventh, so, um, you know, we'll work around their schedule.
Yes, we'll, yes, we'll work around their schedule.
May I ask, so you guys would like to see somewhat of a plot plan that shows landscaping?
Exactly.
How many pumps, um, and also a traffic study?
Yeah, the design, the true design of what is going to be there, and then a traffic study.
Well, the thing is, our ordinance already has out the landscaping that should be there.
Yes.
And like I said, it was in their contract, but that doesn't hold them to what, and we want to see the plan ahead of time, so that, you know, we can make it conditional upon that, and have them go forward, thank you.
Okay, are we good with that? Did you hear that, Tom?
Yes, I heard that, um, it would, would not this be all up to the buyer to submit the plan? All we're trying to do is to make this a little easier, easier for the buyer by having this zone change occur before the sale transpires. So if, if we, if we have, if we just, if it just, me, if I came to the planning commission with a, a plan to develop this land, I would have to go through the approval process as well, would I not?
Yes, so what you're saying, what you're saying is, can we go ahead and approve the zone change without anything further? Because what, is it gonna really make any difference if we approve the zone change versus what, if they can't, if there's a problem, they can't go forward, it doesn't matter if the zone changes there or not? Because they're wanting, the buyer, I'm sure wants to make sure the zone can be changed before they go any further.
But do we want to change it?
Exactly, yeah.
So.
Commissioner, excuse me, commissioners?
Yeah?
If you, if you make the zone change, then Nate won't have to go in front of the planning commission again. All they'll have to do is get a, uh, is go to Hannah and get a opinion from there.
Okay, so yeah, no, we won't, we would want to table that until we got back the information. Thank you. Yes, I agree, so.
Thank you, Tom.
So are we all on board on tabling it until we get more information from the, the traffic report and the information from the developer?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to table this item, and then Kyla will work, uh, with the developer and the seller to get the information that we need, please. Good to move on? Alright, moving forward. We need our update from, um, Public Works Director.
Do we appoint it?
Yeah.
Push it one more time. He was already on, okay.
Public Works Director, Don Prince, um, wait, I wrote all this down. Okay, first thing first, the dog park in Austin. I finally got a number from the guy on a date, it'll possibly be here the eighth and fifteenth, depending on the weather. We'll get the fence up and get that rolling finally, hopefully COVID is, let's shut them down, and if everything works out, that's our dates. I've been working on the fencing around the ball fields, and I, I haven't been able to get quotes from people, and same excuse, COVID. I got one, one company that's been giving me quotes, and he's still got to come back and finish up for that. For the airport water line, Aaron?
Uh, Aaron Martinez with AM Engineering for the record, Don asked me to come up here and, uh, assist with the project updates on the components that my firm is, uh, responsible for. Uh, so in terms of the airport water line project, that project is a hundred percent complete. We issued Lander County a cost savings analysis that broke that down. Um, project came in about nine point eight percent under budget, so, uh, there were some other factors as part of that cost savings that we had broke down for you guys, so, uh, Mr. Don Prince or Mr. Ramos can provide you that document. But in short, uh, the airport water line project is completed, the airport is up to service. Uh, there's a few, uh, lingering aspects that come with the airport that I'm sure the public works department will be discussing with you about in terms of the rehabilitation of the existing well that's out there. Uh, we didn't want to, uh, relinquish the water rights or the ability to utilize that well on the airport, so we worked really closely with NDEP to ensure that we're gonna somehow be able to rehabilitate that for a non-domestic usage. I think that we've come to a pretty good consensus that that is gonna be achievable, and I think the current direction is that would be a fill stand that would assist the raceway, uh, and help not utilize domestic water for watering the racetrack and those types of things. Uh, so in terms of the airport water line project, the only thing that's remaining right now is the retention and the final payments.
Donnie, I have a question, um, in our finances today, we just approved, um, a safety fence that we just paid for, for the golf course.
Yes.
Can you tell me whereabouts that is?
That's going around the pond.
Not the golf course, the safety fence.
That's going around the ponds that are out there, apparently in, we've discovered kids out there on the ice, and it's extremely thin ice. So we had them put up safety fence around, they're just temporary fence, so during summer months, we can pull it back out and, you know, it still looks pretty out there, and we also put up signs to stay off the ice. It's just to keep the kids off the ice that are out there.
Just for the winter.
Yes, yes, it's thin ice, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, we've installed a PRV valve out here by the gun range, and it's, uh, basically it should control the whole town. It's all in except for the roof on the, on the bulk, so, we're just waiting on the roof to be set and then we'll put it, put everything in line. Lift station out here at the Indian Colony, we've been working on getting this, I gotta get a meeting with the, with the tribe out here, rescheduled and then we'll be moving forward with that hopefully if it, if the tribe will approve our, our, what's the word here I'm looking for? The easement, easement across their property. Um, the water job in Austin, it's all complete, and we've got two small issues with the, we're not sure if there's a leak by the youth center on, on a new meter they put in, we're watching it right now, find out what it is. And then there's a liner delamination in the sewer, and I believe he said they was going in to look at it again here shortly, but they said there should not be an issue with it, so that should pretty much be done shortly. And other than that, it's just been day to day, we've got some upcoming projects to go out to bid for, um, yeah, slurry seal and shit, stuff.
We have the, uh, the, the projects that are waiting to go to bid from my end are the slurry seal and preventative maintenance, as we call it, uh, for Lander County, so it's a combination of some patchwork that's being done in selective areas that the public works department has identified, and then primarily it's a, a capes seal that we'll be doing, um, throughout, um, a lot of the roadway networks, uh, in Battle Mountain area.
So I have a suggestion for the, for this next budget, Bert and I talked about this a little bit, um, is over, where the pipeline with the big area, you guys went from town all the way to, if we, if there's any way that we can utilize that as a community walkway like we did here, and put it small enough that people aren't going to drive on it, but big enough that people can ride bikes and utilize, because that would be a really nice path.
That's a great idea.
And, um, if that's something we can get done, this next, uh, would be great because, you know.
We're talking from?
We're, yeah, the, the long way too, because people are excited, because I've asked different people about the community, and they just think that's great, but they know that side by sides and stuff will be on it, if you make it too big, so you kind of have to, and him and I've had lots of discussion, but I, we can get, with that, move ahead, Bert.
Yes, that, um, part of that is we're looking at, at easements and what kind of, if we just have utility or if we have public, you know, so that, so the different labels of easement will kind of determine that, we gotta do a little more work on that.
Okay.
If I could just ask, whi- which location are you talking about?
The new water line.
From eight A to Hilltop or the whole connection of the loop line?
No, no, we're talking from, um, I believe that's Mountain View to eight A that comes across.
Gotcha, where we read, through the BLM component?
Yes.
I see.
Just not alongside the front of the road, which.
And then from, and then from eight A to Hilltop as well, is that?
No, I don't believe we were talking from eight A to Hilltop, no, just that, just that section.
The reason I ask is because we have the, the eight A to Hilltop roadway con- connector project that's currently under design, that's a roadway project that's going to connect from eight A to Hilltop, and so if you wanted a continuation of that bike lane component, honestly, would be a rather easy approach to do that on that connector project, to actually have a bike lane as part of that if you wanted to.
Well, yeah, yeah, if that's something feasible, absolutely.
Now's the time to do it.
To me, that would be the most cost effective approach, whereas the areas that you're talking about from Mountain View to eight A would be, uh, more of a virgin ground approach, it would be a much more cost intensive. Whereas where we're doing the connector roadway, it's already kind of on that.
That's fine, whatever's, whatever's cheaper and whatever's more feasible.
Well, maybe we can put that as a bid alternate, and then the commission can decide if it's worth the money.
Well, I was thinking of doing them both, so just tie them together.
Put it together, that would be, that would be wonderful to.
Just wanted to make sure I understood what you guys were saying.
I'll just say this, my mindset on budget this year is to spend Lander County's money in Lander County, for Lander County, so that it can't be taken from Lander County, and I think we should line up some big projects and get them done. One thing we need to continue, the curb sidewalks and gutters, how unfair is it for the east side to get that, but not the west side? We just have to address this, and the political climate as it is, I want to spend our money in Lander County so that it can't be, in a way that it's not taken from Lander County.
I'm with you one hundred percent on that, so.
That, that was, I'd like to add a little bit to Donnie's update, um, not to, I, um, Donnie doesn't want to brag on himself, so I will. The, uh, and, and what you said, that was part of three phases I think we were gonna do, and, uh, me and Donnie had talked, I think we was gonna do it in one phase this next year and make it a big for all of, all of Battle Mountain, you know, put some sidewalks in, the kids love them, people love them, but is what I wanted to brag on Donnie with a little bit here is the, is the cost savings, and it's not just Donnie, it's, uh, um, Honeywell Construction and Aaron Martinez. The, uh, Honeywell saved us four hundred and seven thousand dollars and fifty seven, four hundred and seven thousand fifty seven dollars and forty seven cents on the job that they just did out here on this water line project, that's below what their low bid was. Um, and then the development agreement, we got an additional four hundred thousand dollars back from the developers for, for the agreement that we had in place. And, uh, and then the engineer saved us forty eight thousand four hundred and fifty four dollars, um, for a total project savings of one million nine hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred and sixty three dollars. So almost two million dollars of total project savings by these guys all working together and, um, truly doing us a great job. You don't find any other contractors that go to town and don't beat you to death with change orders. And Honeywell and Aaron Martinez, they've come together, and when we change something on a project, they come in, they don't beat us up with a change order, they give us straight costs, and they make things work, and you don't find that anywhere else. That's to the tune of two million dollars we just saved on one project, which is, is truly incredible, and I think that it, the credit needs to be given to Donnie and Aaron and to the, uh, you know, the contractors for Honeywell, for, for doing that for Lander County, that's something we can put to the bike trails or something else, but it's really important that that stuff's on the record for the, for the community to hear.
So I just want to mention this, a couple of years ago, since we're talking about public works, Bert had some ideas for Austin about the pool and turning it into maybe a rec center down there, building a, over top of it. Do you still have those?
Yeah, at that time, we were talking about, because we just built the rec center down here, and what we could do for, for the community of Austin to get something going down there, and the, uh, the thought was to just enclose the pool that's there. Um, the last two years, we haven't had applications to even operate the pool in the summer. And that's kind of the issue, I, I would love to do something for Austin, more than anybody knows, but it, um, would even love more to have some people step forward and take some of these jobs that we've been advertising down there, because it's really hard to find people, and the few kids in the community there suffer from that.
If, if, well, I'm thinking that if that mine goes in in Grass Valley, Austin's gonna get a bump. So we should get ready for that bump in the future and have a facility ready to go. But, you know, thinking, spending money in Lander County and keeping it here.
And one of the suggestions about, the, um, ladies from the pool approached me on that and said that they would be willing to take turns, and Sean can, they, that, you know, to go down there for a week at a time and rotate, then see what, if you're, if they have, if they open it and you have your guards there, are the people going to come, so we can see if they're gonna actually utilize it? And they were more than happy to switch off, um, that was just our talking, you know, just off the record talking, so you can speak on that.
Sean Baker for the record, uh, that is an option we're looking at, Kathy and Patsy, commission. Uh, the other thing is, we're going out to advertise for the jobs in Austin, so if you know anyone in Austin or have anyone down there, tell them to look for that job posting because it's going out too, but that's also the other option we're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, one of the ideas was if we had enough, um, up here, that we could send them down, you know, a couple days a week or something like that, and we didn't have enough last year, so maybe.
And the other option is those jobs are for Austin pool, we could advertise down here and see if anyone wants to go spend the summer up in Austin.
Yeah.
Um, but tossing a couple ideas around, but we'll get on that here shortly.
Very good, thank you.
And we, we are advertising really, really early in, we might advertise two or three times, whatever it takes to try to get somebody attracted to this, but.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward. For possible, possible action to approve, disapprove one of the following bids for the, um, recreation center dehumidifier system. Number one, Mount Rose Heating and Air Conditioning, um, seventy eight thousand nine hundred, uh, recommended by Loomis Associates, rec center supervisor, public works director, and, uh, supported by county manager. Number two, ACCO Engineering System, one hundred and six thousand five hundred, okay.
Okay, Sean Baker for the record, um, this is the project we budgeted for, for the, uh, silencers for the dehumidifier, because it's loud in the full area, um, we've got two bids, um, whatever you guys want to go with, I can call the engineer if you guys want him on the phone to ask him questions.
No, I, I don't want, sorry, I need to go.
Ted? Are we gonna add this on to the defect lawsuit?
Um, it's not standing, it's alw- it's already included, it, didn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that was my next question was, so now.
And it is, and I've spent time with the lawyers and their, uh, and structural engineers at the rec center, we've gone over a lot of things, and this was part of that too.
Okay. So do you have a motion? Any more questions, or wait, do you have a question, Patsy?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we accept the bid for the central recreation cen- center dehumidifier system. Proposal number one that, uh, our employees recommend.
All right.
I'll say it.
So I have a.
I will second the motion and just.
Oh, Brian, Brian seconded it, but go ahead.
Okay, but to clarify that, I think we need the name of Mount Rose Heating and Air Conditioning.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll add that in, it's Mount Rose Heating and Air Conditioning for seventy eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right, so are, made the motion Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's, who's Loomis, Bert?
Loomis is the engineer.
Okay, we got a different engineer than, yes.
All right, none opposed, so moving forward.
Thank you.
You got a commission, before you move forward, Brian needs to second the modified motion.
Okay, you need to second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Ted.
Ms. Kathy, um, we have a gentleman on the phone that would, would like to speak on item number twelve, if you would reopen it.
All right, we're going to, um, reopen number twelve. Do I need to read it back in, or just, or just opening it again? Huh? Okay, we're just gonna open number twelve.
Uh, hello, this is one thing, can you give me now?
We can hear you in bits and pieces, so it's a little bit, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so, for, for the confusion, probably, um, I was not unmuted and, um, yeah, I heard the proceedings. Um, uh, so, uh, it's a kind of crash, tornado situation in regards to the, the study. Uh, uh, can you hear me properly?
Uh, we can barely, we can barely hear you, at least I can barely hear you.
Oh. Oh, no.
All right, that's a little better, go ahead.
Okay, okay, great, yeah, so, um, I was hearing the proceedings, uh, commission proceedings, good, good morning commissioners. Uh, this is one thing, uh, so representing bad weekends, uh, and, and I'm sorry for the confusion. Uh, so in regards to traffic study, uh, so there are like three issues, uh, three items that were, uh, discussed and amongst the commission. One is about the, uh, land development, so, uh, the gas station is going to talk to the highway travelers as well, the regional and the local community, so yes, there might be, uh, trucks coming in and out, but at the same time, uh, traffic study will be able to respond, we have a, a site plan, a proposed site plan ready for the traffic engineer. So if you can please condition this, uh, the condition of approval to get the traffic study done, uh, and definitely we will work with NDA, and I believe the, the, the county staff, they did come through our intent to the NDA, but we didn't see anything coming from the NDA, maybe the reason is we don't, we don't have the site plan, and the site plan is waiting on the re-zoning of the parcel. So our progress can be conditioned, uh, so we can have it, that it's ready done, and also whether the landscaping requirements are, uh, we will be doing the la- the rest landscaping, but if the county has some specific, uh, uh, requirement, so we will be happy to provide that to you.
So were you able to hear?
I, I couldn't understand it.
I, I still, and I also like him.
Reiterate the conditions and see if he has a problem with that.
Um, well, he'd said that, um, he wanted us to go off of, if they did, to change, go ahead and change on the, and not move forward unless, if I could understand him correctly, and it would be easier if he was here in person, so we could hear him, um, that he wanted us to go forward, um, and, but basically, he wanted us to go forward. I, I mean, it was, and that, uh, on, on like these conditions, that yes, they're going to put in the landscaping and stuff like that, but it still puts us back, we still don't have anything in front of us that says, that has to hold them to task, and that we also, I, with that area, with the mess that we have there already, I think regardless, and like Ted said, if we, if we okay it, then all she has to, they, all they have to do is go to Anna and we get ourselves in the quandary, that we wait and get the study done, we have them, it would be nice to have them here in person, so all of these questions can be answered in person.
I think we're gonna stand for, on the traffic study and the landscaping plan that we need before we actually approve the zoning change.
I agree.
And I, I think that with the traffic study, that'll ease our minds if we make a decision on property at an a- at that angle or over this angle, because the question is traffic right there at.
We may, we may, once we see that, we may want to approve it with some conditions, but we don't know that.
Yes, and so I just, I, I'm still on the, on the, to, to other traffic, um, whatever mess we have already, and that, this be done, do you have anything, Kyla?
What if we put the, had them put the entrance over here by the police station to go in and out? That would alleviate a lot of traffic on the other end, coming off the overpass.
It still comes down to the traffic study.
It still comes down to the amount of traffic they have, we have here anyway, um, uh, just on this road, along, just alone. And so regardless of what, what entrance they take, they're still causing, it's gonna still cause, if there's like trucks in a line trying to pull in because of the size of the lane to begin with, if, if they start backing up here, or if they're backed up over there, like we've had in the summertime, those tracks, trucks are backed up over, and so they're already over the overpass and can't turn in, and so then we're just putting another bottleneck to add on. And so then we're just putting another bottleneck to add on to it. So I think I'd feel a lot better going any further, especially because I was the one on the phone with DOT when they said, too bad, it's your problem. We're not having, and that's exactly what they said. And so, um, we do this and then we make a mess for our community.
Okay, Kathy, but you've got him on the line. And if we're not gonna change, then tell him so, so we can move on.
At this point, we're gonna stay with what we want. So we're not holding you up on the phone. Um, we would, this is what we want done first. So at this point, we're going to table it and it can be brought back before us. Correct? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we'll be, I'm gonna.
Now, thank you for your interest in our town.
Oh.
Muted. Unmuted.
See the traffic right now, but in the morning and the afternoon when junior high lets out, oh man, it's a mess.
All right. So, we have fifteen? Is that where we left off?
Yep.
All right. For possible action to approve, disapprove, the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit, um, for what was formerly known as Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two. You're on.
Hi, Lakin.
Hi, Lakin Sullivan for the record. Um, this is just the standard audit that we had to have done for Water and Sewer District Number Two. So it's just for your guys' approval. There was no findings. If you have any questions, we can call the auditor.
Everything's good?
Yeah.
Okay. You bounced it to the penny?
It's just basically what the county inherited, all the numbers. They noted on page six that, uh, the district dissolved.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve. The fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty audit for what was formerly known as Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Patsy made the motion, Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Moving forward. For possible action to approve, disapprove, the proposed agreement between Lander County and Desmond Skeeth DBA, Desi Skeeth Lawn and Parks for Austin Building and Facility Maintenance and repairs in the amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars per year, and authorize the chair to sign. Yeah. And, but I think we have to do, we have to do a separate.
Two separate contracts.
Number, yeah, number sixteen and seventeen are the two that we've separated. So I, um, and we discussed this in our, our previous meetings. So I make a motion, we approve the agreement between Lander County and Desmond Skeeth DBA, Desi Skeeth Lawn and Parks for the Austin Buildings and Facilities Maintenance and Repairs in the amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars per year, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All right. Patsy made the motion, Art second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Seventeen, for possible action to approve, disapprove, the proposed agreement between Lander County and Desmond Skeeth DBA, Desi Skeeth Lawn and Parks for Austin Grounds Maintenance in the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand one ninety-six dollars per year, and authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, so this is the second one. And I will make a motion that we approve the proposed agreement between Lander County and Desmond Skeeth, DBA, Desi Skeeth Lawn and Parks for the Austin Grounds Maintenance in the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand one ninety-six per year, and authorize the chair to sign.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I just have brain fog.
Chair.
I'm sorry, J R. Pat, Patsy made the motion. Uh, J R. second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? Thank Brian. So quiet over there. For possible action to approve, disapprove, resolution twenty twenty-one oh one, adopting amended interlocal cooperative agreement and authorizing the membership hereby to the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development. So that resolution needs to be read in?
We need to read this resolution in, Ted?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number two zero two one dash zero one. A resolution providing for the adoption of an amended interlocal cooperative agreement and authorizing membership thereby to the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority. Lander County, whereas the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority exists for the purpose of promoting industrial development and positive social economic growth in Elko, Eureka, Lander, and White Pound, White Pine Counties, and the cities of Carlin, Elko, Ely, Wells, and West Windover. Whereas it is the desire of this county to maintain a cooperative working relationship for mutual economic and community development with Elko, Eureka, Lander, and White Pine Counties, and the cities of Carlin, Elko, Ely, Wells, and West Windover, as well as the state of Nevada and the federal government. And whereas given the general condition of the economy or the rural areas of Nevada, there is an urgent need for economic development and the general improvement of rural communities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the county does hereby set forth the commissioner's intention to adopt changes as represented in the amended January first, two thousand twenty-one interlocal cooperative agreement of the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be considered a counterpart of the interlocal cooperative agreement and shall be deemed to be an original part thereof. Um, and do I just need to authorize the chairman to sign?
Yeah.
Passed and adopted this day.
Okay, passed and adopted this day. Uh, what is today?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, day of January twenty twenty-one, by the following votes.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And I will second the motion.
All right. So Brian made the motion. Art second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right. For possible action to approve, disapprove, the lease agreement between Lander County and Lander County Kids Club building located at one fifty West Third Street, and authorize the chair to sign. All right, you're on. This is just.
Good morning.
Can you list renewal, correct?
I would, uh, I would, I'd have to caution the commission on this. I, I did call Lauren before, you know, the meeting, so she was well aware, more than blindsided. But, um, they do have paid employees, which doesn't qualify for a nonprofit. And, uh, there was one more thing. What, what else was the other thing I had to do? Oh, and, and a mailing address, which I believe that she picked, um, but I just want to clarify that for the record that the mailing address for all the bills had going directly to her home. So we had to change that and I, I believe she's addressed that.
So is everything cleared and are we in good status to go forward with it now? Or is she not considered a five oh one C three?
That's exactly right.
She.
Oh, she, she's, in my opinion, and I, I believe if you asked Ted, Ted, that Ted would probably say the same, that, um, that does not qualify as a five oh one C three, um, when you, when you have paid employees.
Uh, Lauren Campbell for the record. Um, so we did do our research bef, when we started the five oh one C three. Five oh one C threes can have paid employees under a specific, um, amount. Um, it's fifty thousand dollars per quarter. And we fall very far below that.
Two hundred thousand a year for a nonprofit?
Yes.
Well, it takes care of the Red Cross and all those.
Um, which, you know, other five oh one C threes like Salvation Army, Goodwill, they are all five oh one C threes. And they all have paid employees who far exceed that actually. Um, I did include a document that I found, um, some research I found online that does verify that yes, five oh one C threes can have, um, paid employees.
I mean, I have been in and around five oh one C threes that have had paid employees, um, and, and the donations that they do receive. That's why, and a lot of grants and a lot of, um, uh, donations, it wants to know is, are these for administrative fees to pay employees and things like that. But they still fall within the five oh one C threes as paid employees. Uh, there's lots of, lots of them out there. Um, some of them that shouldn't be, that are huge. Um, for example, Wounded Warriors considered a five, they originally started as a five oh one C three and they have paid employees. So I don't know if, uh, we want to just table this and wait for some more research from the district attorney's office or what he wants to do. Because there, I know there are paid employees for nonprofits.
Ted?
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, you, five oh one C three can have paid, uh, employees up to a certain amount. What the county has done in the past, and I think it's still a policy that they do it, is that they don't give grants, uh, to, for the purpose of paying employees. And that's different from, from, uh, allowing the lease. The, this NRS allows us to lease the agreement under these terms if they qualify as a charitable organization or a five oh one C three. So technically, I had problem with, along with Bertolo, uh, about the, uh, about the address. And if the address is fixed, legally, we can certainly agree to this, uh, lease.
I, I do apologize for misinformation. I did not think that a five oh one C three, and I didn't do my proper research. I apologize for that.
So are we doing?
Well, it's not your fault, Bert. You and I discussed it and, and I think we, we misunderstood that our policy is that we do not give money via grants for the purpose of paying employees.
Yeah, we can't pay any of their, yeah, any of their salaries. Right. That's, that's the problem we have with the chamber. Yeah, we can't pay salaries. So how many families or children have you had this last year?
Um, so according, we have, we've had a current drop due to COVID, of course. Um, before COVID hit, we were serving approximately, um, twenty-five Lander County families for daycare and preschool services. Um, we're down to about forty right now, but, um, forty, forty families.
Well, what was the first?
Fifty, about fifty.
Oh, fifty.
About fifty.
I thought you said twenty-five.
She's not twenty-five. She's, what she's saying is they're down twenty-five.
So we're, we're down a bit. Um, however, we, because we work closely with, um, the state's daycare, um, regulation, the Department of Behavioral Health. And, um, they have lifted a few restrictions, um, for daycare recently. And so we are going to start advertising for more space. So, um, and we currently have nine employees.
In, in other words, the building that you're in is too small?
No, we'll, we'll make it work. No, we have plenty of room. Yeah, we can service in that building, um, doing some unique scheduling, about fifty children.
Who actually does your audit? Do you do an audit?
We, um, we have done an internal audit. Um, however, we are, um, we do have state inspections frequently.
So is that something that we can request that they, that we, on audits, on stuff like that, so we know exactly what's going where? We're giving that, utilizing, giving, basically giving that building for that much? Is that something? Ted, is that something that we can ask for as an audit? So we can see where the funds are going since we are basically donating the building?
Absolutely.
Uh, yes, we can modify the contract to include an audit. And this is what, and I want to go on the record, but this is not Bert's fault.
No.
It was, I apologize to you guys. You know, you blame it on me if you blame it, this information on anyone.
I do. I blame you, Ted.
Okay, I'll take it. I'm a big boy. Uh, but it, it gets mixed up when we give them a grant, which they ask for every year, and this. This is different from the grant. If we, we can put, we have put conditions on the grant, but we can also put conditions on this as long as it's in the contract. So if you approve the contract with modifications, just spell out the modifications and we will put them in the contract before it's signed.
Yes, I think that.
This is a two-year contract, right?
Yes.
That they're, um, my suggestion, everybody else can put their two cents in, is that if we go ahead and, uh, prove it, that we have the modification, that we would like to see an audit done. Um, so we know what.
Or see their last audit. Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, to see their, you know.
A yearly, a yearly audit.
Yes, an annual audit we'd like to see. So can we have that added, add, 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 extend it to the, this one, this contract?
Yeah. Um, and if you guys would, in, in the motion you make, if you would just add the address change.
Oh, and the, but they, they've changed the address.
Oh, yeah, we just need to see that.
Okay, we need to see the address change, yes. So whoever wants to make that motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the lease agreement between Lander County, Lander County Kids Club for the building located at an address on West Third Street. What's, is it one fifty? It is one fifty?
Yes.
Okay, at one fifty, Third Street, with the stipulation that we will receive an annual, uh, report forwarded from, um, Ms. Campbell and, uh, from the state. Is that it?
And the address change.
And the address.
And the address change.
We have not a stipulation with the modification, modification of the contract.
With the modification of the contract.
And modifications thereof. Do you second it?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So Art made the motion, Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are the kids?
They're wonderful.
Okay. Is the COVID messing them up?
No. Um, some of them get a little freaked out. You know, our employees are required to wear masks and that's real hard on some of them. So we've kind of gotten around a few of those things, but.
Do you have to?
We do. If we would lose our state license, we'd get them, unfortunately.
Maybe not in the future.
Hopefully here soon. Thank you.
All right. Moving forward. For possible action to approve, disapprove, or amend the contract between Lander County and Elko County for temporary housing for Lander County juveniles at the Northeastern Nevada Juvenile Detention Center. Mr. Baldini?
Dan Baldini for the record.
Morning, Dan.
Morning, everybody. Um, before you, you have a new contract. The, the existing contract that we had with Elko County Detention Center expired in twenty twenty. So, uh, we have been working in collaboration with Elko County to, um, extend our contract with them. And the contract is for any youth that are detained, they go to Elko's Detention Center.
Any, any changes on it at all?
The only change is sort of the dates and the amount of time. Um, we're asking for a four-year contract and that's all there is to it. And the only thing that we're really liable for is three hundred dollars a day for detention. The, it's, the dates have just changed. Um, and that's the only change in the contract that you have from the pre-existing contract.
We're just responsible for the time that Lander County has to pay for, for the amount of time that the individual is incarcerated.
That is correct. Yes.
Now, just for the record, I, I want people to understand that when we were involved in the Leighton Hall, Leighton Hall, yeah, uh, we were paying over three hundred thousand dollars a year, whether we sent kids or not.
That's right.
And, uh, this is just such a better deal for Lander County financially.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, and, and we're doing, our agency works really hard to, for alternatives to detention, house arrest, electronic monitoring, things of that nature, um, that is really helpful. Um, we detain kids only if kids really, it's determined they really need detention.
How are the kids doing?
We're doing all right. Um, I think in, since July this year, we've only detained three youth. Um, and we've used alternatives for the rest of the kids. But delinquency, I, I think is, is going down a little bit. There's a lot of, uh, illegal use of controlled substances, primarily marijuana, that's impacting the youth.
Keeping them home.
Yeah, keeping them home is impacting them. Um, but all of our programming and everything is up and running. We're, we're, we're working every day. Um, I think the kids, uh, that, day on, day off, and when they release them because of COVID, it really works on the youth, you know? But, um, our referrals are just remaining about steady. There's no real big increase. But, um.
I know that with the shutdown, it's COVID stuff, that there's a higher incidence of suicide in Clark County than Washoe County. I hope we don't have any of that stuff here. I haven't been around the kids for a long time. I kind of miss them. Always looking out for them.
Yeah, and extracurricular activities sure puts, you know, that, just stopping that is really impacting you.
A new ice rink?
I'm sorry.
A new ice rink. We have a new ice rink going in.
And we have wrestling mats. And we have wrestling mats.
Yes, but that's where I'm missing you today.
We are missing.
We're going off this, getting off the subject, so now the four, I have a question, this is Kathy, have a question.
Is he gonna tell you about the date?
Can I turn it on?
Yes, go ahead.
The terms of this contract as written, and it may be a typo, is for five years. We can't legally do a five-year contract. So this could end at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, if it's a four-year contract. If it's a five-year contract, it ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And that's, that's what's in the backup, a five-year contract.
So, go ahead.
Um, I, I made an adjustment with Elko County, and that should, that should be the contract you have in front of you is for four years.
Well, it says January for twenty twenty-one.
I gave you an adjusted one for four, because I was alerted that five-year contracts were not going to be heard by the commission.
So the one we have in here is just a four that we have backup for? The one you have in there is a five. The one you made the adjustment for, Michelle brought, but it still is a five.
It's still a five?
Yes.
Okay, I have, I have the, I have the adjusted one in my office and I can bring that for the signature.
Nothing, he'll get you the, the corrected one. And he'll get the updated documents? Yeah.
And I, I also need is the, the chairperson and the, the clerk's signatures on that.
So when you get the updated, correct, one of the contracts?
I thought we gave, I thought we gave it to you, but I'll go get it.
But we're, um, we're not gonna cite, tell us the right dates on it, correct?
No, I think you can just make your motion, make sure that makes up-
Make the motion, but as far as signature, I wait until I get the corrected one, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the contract between Lander County and Elko County for temporary housing of Lander County juveniles at the Northeastern Nevada Juvenile Detention Center, and for the agreement term to be January first, two thousand twenty-one to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second.
Second, yeah.
All right, Patsy made the-
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get that contract here.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, Ted. All right, um, so, for possible action to declare a vacancy on the planning commission due to either the death of the planning commissioner, resignation or, um, of a planning commissioner, or the failure of a planning commissioner to attend three successful, successful, uh, success of it, goodness, sorry, guys, regular, um, scheduled meetings, monthly meetings, as stated in Lander County Code two point six zero point zero three zero.
Um, I've got a problem with this. I'm sure there's been plenty of people that have missed three consecutive meetings and this hasn't come forward before.
Is this under this requirement?
If this, if this person-
Chris Martin?
What?
If I can give you a little backup?
Go ahead.
Uh, the, the person at issue here lost their spouse recently and advised Kyla that he would not be attending any more meetings because of that. This is not a, a situation where they're trying to, uh, discipline someone. They are, we are trying to fill a vacancy where legal-
So we know that he's not interested in coming back?
Yes.
Yes.
But we don't have a letter of resignation.
Yes.
Okay, who, who can verify the fact that he has said he doesn't wanna come back?
Kyla.
Okay, that's all I need.
All right. Okay.
Did we ever ask for a resignation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am, Ted.
Okay.
Well, I've got great sympathy for Casey.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we declare a vacancy on the planning commission due to either the death of a planning commissioner, resignation of a planning commissioner, or the failure of a planning commissioner to attend three successive regularly scheduled meetings, monthly meetings as stated in the Lander County Code two point six oh point oh three oh. Um, yeah, no.
All right, so Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
God bless you, Casey.
All right. Yes, so correspondence reports, future agenda items. So, uh, so we're going with, uh, correspondence reports and future agenda items? We just have correspondence, reports, future agenda items.
I, I apologize.
No worries.
We, uh, just recognized our clock up there that we're using to fire our meetings off four minutes early and I, uh, so we need to adjust that.
We're going by her, uh, so, okay. So, do we have anything, future agenda items?
Well, I'll just put a comment on the correspondence.
Okay.
Since, since the final is okay, that the grazing permits, that had all kind of protests and the BLM looked at them and these are the final letters, and they were all given their ten-year contracts, and the protests, um, did not stay, the BLM stayed with their original decision. So we still have the grazing with a little bit of changing, but the grazing is there for our, our ranchers, so, thank you.
And do we have, do we have a, a public comment? No one?
I make a motion.
All right.
I'll second the motion of Jeremy.
All right, Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Bye, Austin.